Okay. I'll move it down when we call it.
Yeah. So we'll call the meeting, the agenda setting meeting of January 22nd, 2025 to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can you scroll down a little bit on that? Do you want to come down a little bit more?
You want me to just keep scrolling?
Well, just, just so people can kind of take a look at it.
I can, I can put the hard copy up so that they can see that. Is that easier?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
Ah, there it is. Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Oh, that's wrong. Okay.
Carlton, can you second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we've moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? I'm sorry, say again.
I didn't, I heard something, but I don't know what I heard.
No, I don't either.
It sounded like a snippet of someone muting with the TV in the background. That's what I'm going with.
Okay. That's today's agenda.
Okay. Great. That'll work. So we don't, do we have a second from Carlton?
Yes, Carlton's seconded.
All right. No discussion, so all favors signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, move, motion's been carried, been passed. Next item on the agenda is approval of the
The pledge of allegiance. We have the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, got it. Okay, stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, let me go back to where we may have been. Sorry.
Did we lose Carlton?
No, Carlton, oops, we did lose Carlton.
Carlton, yep. I don't see him.
We, we lost him. Okay. Well, let's see, since I was the only one that was at the minute.
No, both Ingrid and Carlton were.
That's right. That's right. They were. Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the, the meeting minutes of the, what's the date on that?
January 8th.
January 8th?
Approve as written.
Okay, I'll second it.
Just coming in.
There he is.
Hey Carlton. Carlton, we've moved in second to approve the minutes, previous meeting. Wow.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, Carlton.
Okay, yeah, I signed out with my phone and I've joined with my laptop. So I heard proceedings and I voted in support.
Okay, so motion to, to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Next on the agenda is setting the January 31st, 2025 work session minutes, or agenda rather. Please show the draft agenda. Okay, so the top part looks all, boilerplate's all the same. Okay, please go down. Okay, so we start looking at starting at an 8:00 AM start because we got an awful lot to cover. Any objection to that?
Are we gonna have breakfast?
Yes.
At seven?
Thirty.
All right.
No objection here.
Okay. And you see, we start out with the executive session. We have an employment matter, the personal ratification report, the adult education report. A discussion of proposed selection of an architect for professional design services at Bluffton High School. Discussion of proposed selection of an architect for professional design at Riverview Charter School Gym Edition. And discussion of negotiations incidents who proposed lobbyist contract renewal with Burr former in law enforcement, or not law enforcement, law firm. Is anything else that we need to cover on that? Dr. Rodriguez?
Oh, sir, I think that we, we, we moved those over from the board session and that, from the board meeting in this, we can get it covered here in the work session, so that's it.
Anything from Ingrid or Carlton about the executive session?
No, sir, I'm fine.
I don't see anything missing.
Okay, let's move on.
I put a time at nine o'clock saying that executive session will last an hour so that we can start public, the public session at nine in case we have public comments, so that they can know exactly when the meeting starts. Is that okay?
Carlton, Ingrid, is that okay?
It's fine with me, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing is, we can do executive session after the starting, 8:00 AM, and trying to get it done by nine. I don't see a problem with that, but it, you know, for those of us coming from south abroad with the traffic and everything, that's a pretty early, trying to get there pretty early, I just throw that out there as something to consider as we go, you know, go through this agenda.
Right. Yep, we'll have to play, we'll play that by ear.
Or you can move executive session to the end of the meeting, so you can
That's what I'm saying.
You can start the meeting with public session and then do executive session at the end of the meeting.
Just a thought, a lot of boards do it that way.
I actually would like to try this way first. Since it is unique that we be starting that early, maybe it wouldn't be a frequent occurrence. I like having the executive session to begin with, get all that out of the way.
I concur. I think, let's just give it a try and we'll adjust as necessary. Okay, next on the agenda is break, approval of agenda, the pledge of allegiance, public comments. And then the Riverview Charter School Annual Report. Any, any issues there, Carlton or Ingrid?
None here, sir.
Nope.
Okay. Then we're gonna have a communications update. Dr. Rodriguez, can you tell us about that?
No, you have the facilities master plan.
Facilities master plan, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is that the, is that the normal annual one that comes out?
I think that's when you'll get your new books.
Yeah, that's, we did that last year. We did this.
Right. Okay. Health, well, facilities master plan, then communication, yeah, break, and communications update. Dr. Rodriguez?
It's a construction update. It's not communications update.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay. You threw me for a loop there, but I, I, I ran and checked my, my notes quickly.
There were a lot of the same letters.
Okay, then a health advisory council. How long do you think that'll take, Dr. Rodriguez?
I, I, I think it'll probably be about a, a 25 minutes and then whatever discussion time the board has.
Okay.
So.
Is that a presentation from them or about them?
It's not a presentation from them, no. It's, it's, it's from Dr. Stratos and her team talking about the health advisory council. There's, there's, I think, pertinent and relevant information for the board and then a conversation from the board.
Got it.
Okay.
So, I, I have a question real quick, because I thought this was going to be a training on their governance. So the training is canceled and now this is pretty much going to be a board meeting.
We haven't, we hadn't scheduled a training yet. That was when we're talking about with the retreat. That has not been scheduled yet.
Okay.
And we have, Robin, I'm gonna speak out of memory here, but we have several board work sessions throughout the year, one in January, one in February, related to the budget. I know we have one in October, but that's sort of, we have a standard number of board work sessions that are basically deeper dive board meetings. Right, like four?
Four or five.
There you go, okay.
Because we'll have some, we'll have one in March, we'll have another in August, and we'll have again, though, in October. So yes, pretty much almost quarterly for the budget. Being clear, what you're speaking about, what we talked about was the coherent work session, the coherent governance, but that is being planned with a, with the, the board retreat, not with the work session.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not near.
The budget update, that's the normal budget update we get from Tanya?
Yes, so before that, right after lunch is just an AR on the book review.
Okay.
Book reviews and, and it, it's an adjustment that has to be made on there, and so we're, we'll notify the board through that presentation. Then it's the budget update where it's gonna be the start. I mean, we're, we're basically trying to kick off here the, the budget conversation and she's got a, she's got a very brief budget presentation for the board. But then we want to come into the next item, which is asking the board to move through the process like we did last year and set budget priorities, board budget priorities.
Comments?
No, had, had a conversation with CFO Crosby today, so I think this is the appropriate way to move forward. Thank you.
Ingrid, any comment?
No, I think this is the right time, the January work session, just to start, yeah. Getting a picture of what the budget presentation is going to be. Yep.
Okay. And the budget priorities, we'll do it kind of the way we did it last year. It's each, for each board member giving their priorities. You can cloud it like you did last year.
And one of the things we did last year that was helpful to me as well was that you, you, you made a recommendation for board members to send in some of their priorities that I was then able to utilize to build that, that budget priority exercise with the information from anybody who had, who had sent it in.
So, so you want us to send in some, some individual priorities?
Some of the things that, that are, are the priorities for, for each of you individually. Don't share them amongst each other, just, just individually work it out and, and send it into Robin. And then I'll gather them from Robin and I'll pull it together so we can move through that budget exercise if that works.
Okay. I'll, I'll send out a email to all the board members asking them to do that. Okay. I'll, uh, I'll send out a, uh, email to all the board members asking them to do that, um, by, say, Wednesday of next week. That'll give Robin time to collate it and everything. But I'll, I'll do that this evening. Okay. Uh, stipends, what's that about?
Uh, this is, uh, information for the board regarding, uh, the adjustments that, that we have made on stipends for, uh, for personnel that, that have other responsibilities, whether they're director of bands, whether they're, uh, whatever stipends are appropriate within our system. Uh, and we, we made adjustments to the compensation on, on stipends and we want to just, uh, talk about that with the board.
Okay. Any questions, Ingrid or Carlton?
I have, I have two comments. One is, um, the construction update. Is that just our routine, sort of where we're at, that we get from Robert? Um, or is that a special construction update?
Oh, this is, this is essentially, uh, a, 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 a routine construction update, uh, because in the month of January, you will not have had one.
Right, right.
And if we don't do it at this juncture, uh, then we'll miss the month of January.
So my question, my, my, my request would be two. One, to both Robert and to Riverview Charter. This is a big agenda with a lot of topics and it's going to be a learning exercise for our new board members. Um, so I would like to request that Riverview, in the past, they've come and they've given us sort of a marketing video, talked about, you know, I, I, we just need to kind of keep those two sort of, um, pro forma agenda items efficient so that we can really focus on the budget priorities and the facilities master plan. That's my take on it. I don't know how uh, Mr. Dallas and Colonel Guyer feel about that.
Hey, Ingrid, I talked to Devante Singleton yesterday about his report. He's going to have to do it on Zoom because he has to be at a, a charter school conference. And, uh, I, we talked about that and it will not be a marketing, uh, kind of thing. It will be, these are, these are my priorities, these are my challenges, these are, these are, uh, however, what we're focused on in academics, but it will be a, a very efficient report.
And I would like to request that from Mr. Auden as well, because that's a lot of information, but we get it pretty routinely. Um, so kind of keep it to the, yeah.
You know, an executive session, a executive, uh, piece, one pager could probably be sufficient, Frank, don't you think?
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
And I would emphasize also to, especially to, to all our board members and some of our new members, if you have questions, to send them in to Mr. Auden in advance, because it's, what, eighty-some pages of slides is generally like a PowerPoint is what it spends.
Yeah, right.
So it's a lot to go through, but we get it routinely every month.
Can I follow up on that, Mr. Chair?
Good, thank you.
Um, yeah, so, uh, we had talked about there being a format for presentations. So there will be a, an executive summary note longer than two pages. There'll be the content. Uh, that could be as long as the presenters feel it needs to be individually. We as board members would review and digest that. But then at the, um, the third part would be, what are the questions and what are, what are they asking from the board? Uh, what's the trigger date for that, beginning to execute that?
The, this board meeting that just got canceled?
Okay, good, good.
So.
No problem.
Yeah. So, uh, some of these items on here, so the difference in a work session and, and, and a board meeting is that some of the items in work sessions don't have any action. They're just, uh, uh, informative components where you do a deeper dive for board members. In this, sometimes they do, a few of these, uh, or a couple of these are gonna have some, some board action. Yeah. Uh, but like, like, like the Riverview Charter one is gonna have, uh, a board action, a, a vote for, for, for approval at the end of it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and we, what have we missed from, uh, the meeting that we should have had last night, except for the weather? Is there anything that we missed out of that, uh, agenda?
Actually, to tell you the truth, I went through the agenda and I, and I pulled out, uh, the critical components that had to come before the board. Uh, so any, anything, you know, the points of celebration obviously is not on here. Uh, and, and, uh, items from a superintendent's report that were informational items, uh, for the board are not on here as well. So, so those are, those are two items that can go on to the next board meeting, which means, uh, uh, we don't, we don't necessarily have to reschedule that, that meeting. We can accomplish it through this and with, with the executive session.
Okay, if there's not
I also, I'm sorry, Colonel, the other thing I did, I looked at, uh, future topics, uh, document that the board has. And, and that's where I brought in the stipend, uh, piece because, uh, that was a request from a board member and I believe it had been assigned to a, to a future meeting, a, a, a work session, I think. So, so this, this covers that one in here as well.
Okay, if there's no objection by, uh,
Colonel?
Colonel? Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, um, uh, for the benefit of the new board members and the legacy existing board members, pre-existing board members, could we see what's left on that, um, topics list? Uh, because there's some things that, uh, in conversations have come up. Uh, there's some new, uh, things that are taking place, like the $500 billion investment in technology. And so it might be worthwhile for us to have a very rigorous review of if, how the school district might gear up to participate in that. And others.
Rob, Robin, do you have that, uh, have that list?
Um, are we talking about the legislature topic list?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
There was only, was only one thing left on the future, uh, topic list and legislative stuff was, was not stuff that was on it. Um.
Right.
Uh, hold on.
I will say, uh, Mr. Dallas, I totally agree. I also know, you know, the, the, the facilities master plan is a big bunch, a bunch of information that will generate a lot of discussion. And I think the board budget, when I look at what other boards are doing this time of year, they're starting to get a rough outline of what the district is gonna present and it's an opportunity to bring up priorities. It's an opportunity to discuss sort of challenges. So to me, I think we should look at our future topic list, but I feel like this agenda is going to be chock full of information and presentations. Like I'm more, it's, it's a lot to, to do in, in one day.
Are you referring to this agenda that we're reviewing? No, I'm, I'm referring to adding these topics to the list that only, I think, as Cushingberry said, there's only one there now.
I got you.
With the new administration, there are lots of things that are developing, the $500 billion, uh, technology investment. I'm already having people contact to say how, uh, on the private side are we gonna get involved. So, uh, we want to get to the head of the list for that, if possible.
Sounds good. One thing I'd like to add to the, uh, last, uh, uh, agenda item is, uh, the board, the chair report.
Oh, yeah.
Can't forget that.
That should be at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep.
Um.
Where do you want it?
That's, I, I'd like to do it at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Your call, sir.
Yeah, let's do it at the end of the meeting.
Consider it done.
Okay, any, any other, uh, items that we need to discuss?
None here.
I'm good.
Okay, uh, Pastor Gordon, do you have anything you'd like to, to mention?
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, no, not, not at the moment, just, just listening and learning.
Okay, uh, Dr. Carr, do you have anything that you'd like to comment on? I think you're muted, David.
Sorry. Thought I had unmuted and I didn't. Um, no, I'm good, uh, for the moment and looking forward to the 31st.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Frazier, do you have anything that you'd like to, to add?
No, sir, not at the moment.
All right, I think that's all of the other board members that I see on there.
Mr. Small is on as well.
Yeah, Mr. Small, Mr. Small. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, sir.
All right, sir, thank you very much. Well.
Explain, uh, last future topic agenda. What would you like for me to add on to this?
Carlton, did you want to add on to it?
Oh, oh, yes. A, uh, review of, uh, the 500 technology, but the $500, $500 billion dollars, uh, in technology that's being triggered by the US government and the new administration, uh, because people are, uh, entities are already beginning to call and say, uh, how are you gonna be involved, not me, not the school district per se, but, uh, personal private calls. And so, um, would like to have a discussion about that. Seems like there's gonna be a tremendous opportunity. And it may, it actually may flow over into the academic presentations as to how do we prepare uh, for this, this tremendous amount of investment that's gonna, you know, try to move the US, uh, sustain being in forefront.
Are you talking about Stargate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
You are right on it, Mr. Mr. Dallas.
Hey, even a blind
Off the press.
Even a blind hawk finds acorn every now and then.
Okay. All right, there's nothing further. Uh, we will adjourn by unanimous consent. Any objection? Any objection? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
All right, stay warm.
Stay warm, stay safe, yeah. Thank you.
Bye.